All right, I would like to call to order this Zoom meeting, virtual via Zoom teleconference, zoning meeting for the town of Roxbury, Tuesday, October 13th, 2020, 7:30 PM. Seating of members, we will seat our regular members Elaine Curley, David Miller, myself, Jim Conway, and I'm part, Kim, I'm sorry, Kim Tester, Elaine Curley, David Miller, myself, Jim Conway, and I believe it's, is it Bill's turn? Cheryl?
I think it's Bill's turn, yeah. I think, yeah, I sat like two times ago or something.
I think so. We'll seat Bill for Alan Johnson. And we have no one this evening for public comment. I'd like to approve the minutes of our regular meeting, September 24th. If you've all had a chance to look through them, the only correction I came up with Karen was the seating of members. I think David Miller was left off, because I believe, David, you were here last month.
Yes, I was.
He's listed as present.
Yeah, he's listed as present.
Yeah, on the 14th, but the one you sent around that wasn't listed for some reason.
September 14th one?
It's on the one I have printed out here right now, my name is on there, but the one that I opened, that you sent through the email, my name was not on it, although it did say that I seconded a motion, so.
Kim, what do you have on yours?
I did not realize there was more than one copy that went out.
I have the one that was online and Dave's on it, and I have the printed one and Dave's on it.
See, my printed one, I don't have Dave and Miller for the 14th.
You don't? Okay.
Interesting, it's, yeah.
That's very weird.
Kim Tester, Alan Johnson, Elaine Curley, and myself. Only seated four people on my copy.
He's on mine, too. He's, David Miller's on mine.
Okay. Oh, Alan's here now.
Sorry, Jim, I have no idea how you got a different, a different copy of the minutes. That's weird.
I'll show it to Kim.
No, no, I totally believe you, just, I don't know how that happened. As far as I knew, I only had the one copy that went out to everyone.
Yeah. I need to seat-
Oh, Alan's here, okay.
Johnson and remove Bill.
Okay.
And that's at-
I was having on-
7:35, okay, great.
Hi, Alan.
Hi.
Okay, did anybody have any corrections to the minutes or additions, changes?
I didn't have any. None here.
With that, then I'd entertain a motion to accept as presented.
I motion to-
Dave Miller here, I accept the minutes as they're written for the September 14th meeting.
Second.
Kim's second, okay.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are good.
Okay, thank you.
Zoning regulations review, accessory apartments. You all had a chance to read over this suggested changes.
Was this gonna go to Gail?
John, I believe, John, you have sent this to Gail and you received some comment?
It was nothing conclusive as Gail's review. Commission's choice whether we like the language or not.
This is Bill, is she the one that put delete and cannot persist? Is she the one who wrote the corrections in this copy that I have?
No, Bill, that was, I'm sorry, John Cody, that was Kim.
This was Kim's draft, but we haven't changed.
Well, just one question, just some of the language got changed a bit from last month, right? But the, the overall concept is the same, right? The definition, the, the goals.
Yeah, the goals and the language all remain the same.
Yeah, there were no changes, Elaine, from the first presentation that Kim gave us.
So does anybody have questions on the, on the, how it's worded?
Well, the last month, we, we, we have kept in 14.3.1. We deleted that. So basically, what we're going to is the owners don't have to be on the premises. Is that correct?
That was part of it, yes.
Great.
One of the points, the size of the accessory. In the minutes, I'll just, this is what, in the minutes, accessory apartments, Kim, recap the background behind your draft, which proposed the following, delete guest houses as the regulation is impossible to enforce, eliminate required ratio between size of primary and secondary unit, no primary unit would be the largest, eliminate owner occupancy requirement as it's impossible to enforce, suggested floor area of apartments to be less than or equal to the main dwelling with a minimum of 450 square feet and a maximum of 1,800. Those are the, our goals, if we think that's something we want to do. Now, Kim, I've got one question for anybody, Bill, John, we refer to everything here as an accessory apartment. And Kim, when you built your house, your second house, larger than your first house, okay, do you, then the second house became the primary because it's the larger one?
Correct.
Did you call the other house an apartment?
Uh, I don't even know.
It's another house?
Yeah.
Two house?
Yeah, it became the accessory, so.
A smaller, a smaller house. So somehow, I'm, you know, I want to make sure that I've got it right, that we're, we're not just solely creating accessory apartments, which are part of a primary, we're creating a freestanding house on the same lot.
This is Bill, that's true, that's a good catch, it shouldn't be a building, a building by itself, freestanding apartments within a building, so-
Correct.
That gives us the option, it gives everyone option to buildings, one of which could have an apartment.
Well, somehow, go ahead, Alan.
How about if you have an apartment in your house and an accessory building, is that?
We are.
Yes.
So, there's three things, there's a main house, main house looking apartment-
Yep.
And then accessory apartment.
The way I understand it, if we had an apartment-
Accessory building, not, not, yeah.
Accessory building, accessory freestanding, living, habitable. So, the wordage somewhere in our reg, we have to say accessory, separate accessory apartment from accessory building.
I personally also have issues with non-owner, non-owner on the, as, in one of the, the owner of the property, I think, should retain either the apartment or the main building and as, as his and not, not be rented out. Alan, this is Bill, I don't think we stand a chance in court trying to enforce something like that.
No.
I'd be a prisoner of my own, my own house, I'd have to stay there, my health condition might change, and as far as the accessory apartment goes, it could probably be an accessory apartment in either of the buildings, because Kim and Brian are in their building and they had the other building, and they wanted to have an in-law come in to their building or an in-law, an in-law living there would have to be an apartment, right?
Yeah.
A third use, so I would think that a third use or a second use for an additional use of either building should be the limitation. So you could have, you have two buildings, accessory building and main building, and then if you got older and needed someone to come in, you could have an apartment, accessory apartment in one of those buildings. I think Kim laid out the, the numbers, the restrictions in the accessory apartment separately, didn't you, Kim?
Yeah, and I think, you know, it's important to note, this is Kim, to note that we allow, we currently allow an apartment in the main residence and then one in an accessory building. And I think it's, people have, at this point, I think, taken it, I mean, an accessory building, it's either the whole building, you know, or a house, or an apartment, or part of it. I think it's been, I think it's been open for interpretation at this point.
This is, this is Bill, would it really make any difference which building or accessory apartment would be?
Are you talking about an outbuilding?
Well, the apartment would be in, in the building, the main, the bigger building or the smaller building, would it make- But not both buildings?
We already allow an accessory apartment in the main residence.
Okay.
We already allow that.
Or, or in the accessory building.
No, both.
Because, because we, we added the, the barn repurposing.
We already allow-
It's not either or, it's both.
We allow both now, we've had that for several years.
Correct.
Yeah. Correct.
So-
May I speak, excuse me, Jim, what, when I moved here, we allowed in-law apartments. We were told, we were told we could have an in-law apartment as long as it was family that moved in.
Correct, that's correct.
That was-
That needs to be enforced, too.
Yeah.
Well-
This is Kim, so I did some research before the meeting, and I was trying to find stuff in Connecticut, but I couldn't, but there were New York State, 2015 decision, can zoning stop property owners from renting, 2017? And the, it was interesting, because I was trying to find some other things, too, it said the power to zone was not a general police power, but a power to regulate land use. It cited the fundamental rule that zoning essentially deals with land use and not with the person who owns or occupies it. And then there was another one, and they all referenced Rathkoff, a law of zoning and planning, which has been around for an eternity, it seems like it's kind of the, this sort of major document that is used in the United States.
Was that, Kim, was that a court case, or what, what was that?
This one was a court case, New York-
How do you spell that, Rath, what do you, what do you?
Well, this is a separate one that I was, this wasn't, the court case was Farrell Fritz's attorneys, F A R R E L L, R F R I T Z attorneys, and they're out of Albany and Long Island. And then, this other one, was this interesting, because this is written by Rathkoff, R A T H K O P F, called the law of zoning and planning, and it seems like sort of the Bible of, you know, what's used across to you.
Dave Miller here, and I think, Kim, along that vein of thought, that case makes sense, because how would, how are you going to police the idea of whether the owner lives there or not? So it really is a moot point, as long as all the, who cares, as long as the rules are met.
Yeah, this is Kim, so I think what they were saying was what the, what the, what the role is of zoning commission, I'm reading all this and just trying to learn, too, but the zoning enabling laws authorizing local government land use obligation power do not authorize regulation of identity or status of owners or persons who occupy the land. And so, it's about land use and land. You know, it's kind of interesting, they can't regulate it and-
Well, then, may I, I'm sorry, I don't know if I'm getting cut off, this is Elaine, that principle doesn't hold water, because what we have, what we've been working on a few cases of people, what, what was the one where Swansons were cutting, you, the way they were using their property in the backyard, for example, do you remember that case? Where the neighbor filed a complaint, because, and then we had to determine whether it was a, a home industry, et cetera, et cetera.
I think that was home, I'm thinking about that, this is Kim, maybe that too, and one, thinking that the home-based business, different.
Yeah, John, yeah, because that went via special permit, absolutely true, it was a home enterprise class one, I do believe, or class three, which is automatically-
Correct.
Not, not quite the same as a residency or habitable living.
I got one question for everyone, and maybe you can help me out, on the 14.3.4, a secondary unit in an accessory building, so that's an apartment, a secondary unit in an accessory building be subordinate in size to the primary dwelling, so that would be the main house.
Yeah.
Even though this is out over the garage, the secondary unit in an accessory building. So, and that's where you got your 1,800 square feet, and that's telling me that that's the only thing I can do, I can't go out and build another house that's 1,800 square feet.
Correct, you can only-
But you could, sorry, down.
So, somewhere in here, I would like to see the language that would give me permission to build a second freestanding home up to the size of 1,800 square feet on that lot.
Why?
No, I think you're right.
Kim, that's what you did.
We need to make two, two definitions, that it's a, a secondary building or it's a building as an apartment, maybe if we had a, if we addressed the secondary accessory building, 1,800 square feet, that's one thing, and then an accessory apartment in either building.
Correct.
Would, would cover everything, and then we're, this, this basically simplifies itself to just three things, elimination of guest house, and allowance for an additional building not exceeding 1,800 square feet, and have any accessory apartment in either of the buildings. Not both, but e, one or the other. Yeah, be one or the other, right. The apartment, the accessory, accessory apartment could be in either building, one or the other, not both. So you'd always be limited to three living units, main building, accessory building, and accessory apartment for your in-laws or your caregiver or whatever.
An either building, correct. Okay, with that, that's, that was my understanding of what we're trying to permit, but we got to write that language in here somewhere.
So I just want to be clear, this is Kim, so, Bill, what I heard you say was that we would be limiting the size of an accessory building, which I don't think that we really want to do.
No, 1,800 feet.
No, that's for an apart, that's for an apartment.
In the beginning, the 1,800 square feet was gonna be, so you didn't have to do what you did, building a bigger house to be, make your smaller than 50%.
That's a real important thing, right.
Yep.
So, and that would pertain to a second building.
Dave Miller here, I think you got to spell out your technologies, I think we're mixing accessory buildings and accessory apartments and apartments.
Yeah, and units.
We need to, we need to have a definition, I mean, one is the main dwelling, let's call that the, the primary, and let's call a freestanding accessory building, which is the smaller structure.
Accessory building or accessory apartment?
Building, building.
It's a structure that can either have an apartment in it, or the main house can have an apartment in it, in, in-law apartment or whatever, accessory apartment. So you have a, a primary main house, an accessory freestanding building.
Up to, what is it, 1,800?
1,800 square feet.
1,800 square feet, or-
No, that's the size of the original house.
Or equal to the size of the primary. Is that right, Jim?
No.
Okay, just 1,800 square, so in other words, your primary house could be 1,400 square feet, you build an accessory freestanding building at 1,800 square feet, and then you can put an in-law apartment in either.
Correct, kind of, if you build the bigger one than your primary, you're going to have to re-designate the larger one of the two as the primary.
Okay, that's good.
It's easy.
That's easy.
It just goes by definition.
I think that spells it out pretty clearly right there.
I have one issue with that, is, let's say you live in a, you have a very, one of these small, non-conforming houses that's, I'm saying 800 square feet.
Right.
And you want to build a 2,500 square foot building, and call that the main building and the other, the accessory building, I mean, this way, we said you can't build it over 1,800.
You can, you can do that now, as long as one is less than the 50%, and the, we went to 1,800, but I think you can build a 25.
Sure, it's John Cody, yeah, no problem whatsoever, we would just automatically roll, and it can make a 5,000 square footer.
And that would be the primary.
The larger automatically assumes primary duties, we could say.
Yeah, there we go.
You can coin that phrase, that's right, can be re-designated and that takes care of it.
Right.
So if I have, this is Elaine, if I have a 1,200 square foot ranch, I can construct a 3,600 square foot accessory building, and put, put an apartment on that as well.
It would be considered a primary.
It would become the primary.
It would become the primary, put an apartment in if you'd like, you can do that right now without any changes.
Right.
I have, I'm having some trouble with that, with all of that, because an accessory building doesn't necessarily mean that there has to be an apartment in it, accessory building could be a horse barn.
Workstation apartment.
Oh, yeah.
It could be a garage, right, it's-
It's not Cody, we have a definition for the accessory apartment, so it would fall right into that.
Right.
Barns, garages, structures are totally different thing, we're looking at habitable space here.
Right, that's the difference.
Well, accessory building, though, is that specifically to-
So why don't we call it accessory housing?
Actually, we do have definitions for barns and stuff like that, so that does exist, and we also have a definition for accessory apartment.
The accessory building, though, what does that mean?
Well, without the hap, without the living space, it would be a barn, a garage, shed, even a small 200 square foot shed is an accessory building.
Okay, that, that's my point, in the discussion tonight, people are saying accessory building, and we don't want to limit that, if we want to talk about limiting, because accessory building can be all those things, so we not, we can't say we're going to say, have an accessory building and limit it to 1,800 square feet.
Dave Miller, why don't we call it secondary housing?
You know-
Or habitable building.
No, that won't work.
Well, it's meant, the whole purpose of this is meant so you can build up to 1,800 square feet for someone to live in it.
This is Bill, I could define it that way, again, why couldn't you just say you can build one accessory apartment in either of the buildings, that's it. You can't have an accessory building in a main building and put an accessory apartment in either one or in, in both of those.
Yes, you can.
And we-
Yes, you can.
It's 14.3.7, there shall be no more than one accessory apartment in the original unit, and there shall be no more than one accessory apartment in the accessory building.
Well, that would give us a chance to have four units, then.
No.
Including two accessory apartments.
That is correct, it's, it, it, as it is, it's four, you can have four units.
Wow, is that bad?
Could you review that, please, Dave, explain that, please?
Where, yeah, I, I thought it was three, so.
I agree.
I know where the four are, too.
14.3.7.
Yeah, no, but what Dave just said, Dave said four, you can have four, would you explain that, please? How can you have four?
If, what it'd have to be is the accessory, instead of being a garage, the accessory would be a freestanding structure that people could live in, and then they would put an apartment in it.
I, when I read that, my, my reading is that the sec, an accessory building would be like a, a garage with the loft spaces and apartment.
That's correct, that's now what we have. What we're trying to accomplish, if we, everybody, because, and Kim, like I said, you've gone through it, currently, right now, I have an 1,800 square foot house, if I want to build a second house for one of my children, I've got eight acres that I can only build a 900 square foot house, and we're trying to change it so I can build an 1,800 square foot house for them as well.
I agree with that, but I think that you should only allow one, one additional accessory apartment in either or, I don't think it should be both.
Correct.
Four separate living arrangements on the property. This is Bill, I hear what you're saying, Alan, but, and that, I brought that point up too earlier a couple times, would it be bad to have an apartment, would it be bad to allow an apartment in either building, both buildings? I think so, I think then you've got four pe, four-
Four families potentially living on your property.
Families with four kids each, so there'd be 16 kids, you know, where, where, you know, and with, I think it should be, I, an accessory building, a second residence on the property in addition to the primary one, and what, either or can also have a in-law, the equivalent of an in-law apartment.
Okay, I think we're all basically on the same, going in the same direction, we got to figure out how to get there, and have the, the, the wordage properly, and it's all right here, Kim, Kim did it, but we got to separate some of the language, so it's not all referring to accessory apartments, something's got to refer to a, an accessory living, habitable, separate building, which is not-
So Jim, could you think we just change this with a, a definition change? Keep the same language for the regs, and maybe just add a, an alternative accessory structure, or, not alternative, um, additional, habitable accessory structures, bingo. It can be created up to 1,800 square feet, blah, blah, blah.
Well, what I was looking at here is 14.3.4, and what we used to say, a minimum floor area, 450, this is an accessory, secondary unit within an accessory building, that's an apartment, minimum, minimum 450, originally maximum 50% of the, the original building. So that's an accessory apartment, that can stay just the way it is, and we're going to add that you can build a freestanding, habitual building up to 1,800 square feet, separate.
Well, this is Kim, so I have a question, what, where does it say, and I, this is why I thought that might be redundant to have to add that, but right now, it doesn't say that accessory building can't be the entire apartment?
Correct, usually the accessory guest house slash apartments like that are like that, it's John, by the way. When I get those permits come in, that's, that's usually what they go for, we do have the garage with accessory apartments above it and stuff like that. When I get those permits come in, that's, that's usually what they go for. We do have the garage with accessory ser- apartments above it and stuff like that. But, um, on that topic, something that's striking me that may be an issue. If we permitted eighteen hundred square foot accessory apartment above a garage and, or a barn, whatever you want to call it. Further down in our definitions, all these accessory buildings need to be subservient to the primary structure. So if you're going to take an eighteen hundred square foot, tack that onto a barn, a silo, a garage, whatever it may be. Is that going to fall into the, is that going to be subservient or under, you know, less dominating than a primary structure, do you think? I, I, that could come into an issue. Just some, I'm just throwing mud at the wall. I I don't know.
This is Elaine, that's the question I asked earlier. If I had a twelve hundred square foot cape and I decide to build a five thousand square foot barn. You all said that the barn becomes the primary structure.
If you were going to live in it, Elaine, it would be the primary. Say, if you're going to use it as a barn, no.
Correct. If I'm, if I'm going to move an accessory apartment into it. And, and, and it's, uh, fourteen hundred square feet of living space in a five thousand square foot barn. It still becomes the primary resident, the primary unit.
Because it's larger, you mean, because it's.
Yep, because it's larger.
Correct.
So it's not sixty-eight hundred square foot building on the property.
So it's this, this is Kim, so it would be, I mean, I think the only way to, um, to figure this out, you know, to keep be consistent is that. It's the living space that determines the primary or the secondary. So just like Elaine said, if she had a twelve hundred square foot house. Square foot barn, and then decided that fourteen hundred square feet. You know, they were going to put in, um, an application for fourteen hundred square foot apartment or house. Section of the barn, that that does then, according to the regulations, become the primary. So, the owner then would have to determine whether, if they didn't want it to be the primary unit, then they'd have to make it smaller, according to the regulation.
This is Bill, so if we change the regulations, we're just, two changes. One, uh, just change the eighteen hundred square feet, and we can have two buildings. On a piece of property, the main building and the accessory building. And just call it a day right there. And then later on, and we, we decide we want to put an apartment in one of those things. So what, does it make any difference whether we have an accessory apartment in the main building or in the primary building? And then Alan, you brought up, should we limit it to just one or the other, or should we allow an accessory apartment in both buildings?
I, I think one or the other. I'm, I just don't think you should end up with four separate family units on a single lot.
Seems to me it was just down to the point whether we, we agree with, buildings should be specified as opposed to a structure. So we have two buildings, and then we just have to decide whether we have an apartment in each one or just in one of them. I think it's down to just the apartment deciding whether to allow. Apartment in each one or either or.
Dave, Dave Miller here. Uh, I think we, we need to figure out, what are we trying to accomplish? Do we want housing in Roxbury? Do we want a place that young people can move into and our families, um, members can move into, uh, livable space? You know, let's figure out, what are we trying to accomplish? And then I think it'll be easier to get there.
What I would like to do, Dave, is take our current reg. That allows a person to build his second house fifty percent of the one he's got. I want it to be up, up to eighteen hundred square feet, another house. As far as the apartments, I do agree with Alan, one in either, but not in both.
Yep, I think that that.
Stick with the, for now, we'll stick with the three living spaces, a primary, secondary, and an apartment.
And that's what we have now. So basically, all we're doing is increasing the size of the second or what will become the primary.
Correct.
Because half of whatever the existing house is, if you've only got a fifteen hundred square foot house.
It's immaterial because you can, you can switch it and the second one can become the primary. So it has nothing to do with the size of the first house.
Uh, yeah, it does, Dave, because mine's eighteen hundred. I would have to build a thirty-six hundred square foot house.
Now, when we change the regs, though, what?
Oh, I understand that.
Yeah, yeah, so we're all on the same page.
Yeah, we're all on the same page, Jim. It's not, I understand exactly what you're saying, and I think that that's very reasonable.
The reason we're changing is right now I can build a nine hundred square foot house, which is not reasonable.
Yeah, if you have a family with two children, a mother, a father with two children, stop thinking of it. That, that's, that's reasonable.
And I don't want to build a thirty-six hundred to make my eighteen hundred one fifty percent.
Because you're happy in your eighteen hundred. So, makes perfect sense.
And you put an apartment in one or the other. You have two of them that are eighteen hundred square feet, and apartment goes in one of them.
Yeah, yeah.
And the new structure is max, maxes out at, at eighteen hundred.
Correct. Yep.
Well, I just.
New, uh, just, yeah, new, new structure's eighteen hundred, and we still allow one apartment on the entire property. In either the original house or the, or the, or the second house on the property.
But, but, that, that's not correct. Um, so, right now, we already allow an apartment in the main house. I'd like to keep that. I don't think that's something we should change.
And don't allow it in the second house.
And then you have the, and one allowed outside of the main house, which is what we allow now.
Right.
We allow.
We have three, yeah.
We have three, exactly.
Kim, on your property, you have two houses. Would you put in? Pardon me?
Not anymore, but I did, yes.
Right, okay. You did have two. Would you put an apartment in both of them?
No. You can only do primary according to our regulations, and I.
All right, well, the new one you built became the primary.
Yep, so then I could put an apartment in there.
So that's three. We said one or the other, but not both.
I, I, so you're, you're saying now that we cut it?
No, one or the other. You created a new primary. So it goes in there. So you're saying it goes in the bigger one and not the smaller one?
Right.
Okay. It's still three.
Okay, all right, so we're just having, we're having wordsmithing issues, which is fine, I get it.
I mean, both of my houses are going to be eighteen hundred square feet, so one's not going to be bigger. I'm just going to put the apartment in the one that I call the primary. Okay. Because that whole primary-secondary thing is pointless.
Well, is it? So if that's the case, then we have to rewrite.
Because in my case, both of mine are going to be the same size.
Well, but, excuse me, may I speak for a moment, Jim? It might be who us all, if you changed the language not to refer to yourself. Because in the end result, if you, you're discussing it now and you go ahead and do exactly what you're saying, it might be misconstrued by, uh, the residents. So if we, if we talk in general terms, it'll avoid a problem. I, I know you're, I know, but that, that's the way.
Elaine, can we save a few moments here? No worries, I'm not going to do that. I'm using my place as an example. It's not going to happen.
That's all you had to do is state that. Yep, thank you.
I did.
Jim, Alan, uh, another example, oh, you, you, you're in a, you're in an eighteen hundred house and you build another eighteen hundred. There's nothing preventing you from adding twenty-five hundred onto the, the first house.
Correct.
Okay.
That's okay.
Yep. And the question?
Well, I think you should be allowed to put an apartment in the primary or the secondary, but not both. An additional apartment.
Yeah, I, I'm with you there, as long as we don't go over three on the property.
Yeah.
Where they're located.
Maximum three.
Yeah.
It's John Cody, yeah, we can have, do that easy. We just have an affidavit submitted or something along those lines, uh, along with the statement of use that would clarify. They can only have one and either, either or.
Correct.
I understand now. Thank you for the clarification.
Okay, I just, this is Cheryl, I just want to clarify one thing, but if you're adding an accessory apartment within one of those buildings. You're not prevented from expanding the footprint of that building, correct?
I, I see why not, you know, sure, go ahead.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's just an addition.
But there's only a maximum of two buildings permitted on your property, so if you have a house. You have a garage with an apartment above it, and then you want to build a pool house, what happens?
That's an accessory building, that's acceptable.
Build that pool house, how about it?
Yeah, build a barn too while you're at it.
Yeah, sheds, barns, garages.
But then you have three, but then you, you, so you're allowed to have, you can't have three buildings, separate buildings on your property.
No restriction on barns.
You can have plenty more, yeah, that, that, that's not, we're looking at habitable space only, not barns.
Habitable only, okay.
Three places.
Handhouses or.
Chicken coops and all that great stuff, I love it.
I got you, okay.
So if we're there, we need to get that written into fourteen point one. And. Um, maybe Kim and John want to get together.
Yeah, Kim, it's John Cody, yeah, Kim, I'll throw something together and bounce it off, we can see what we have.
Okay, that sounds good.
It doesn't, should be pretty simple.
So this is Cheryl, then, do we need to change fourteen point three point seven?
Yes, we would change that.
Need to change that as well?
Yeah.
Yes.
That's just an omission. We, we could strike that, that's even, that's minimal.
It's going to be one or the other, not both.
Right, okay. Okay, just wanted to clarify.
Um, then, may I ask, this is Elaine, may I ask, has anybody, um, inquired, um, as to the difficulty. Responding to calls where the owner is not present on the property with renters?
Such as emergency services or something like that?
Uh, well, reports of, you know, disturbances or having to notify the owner for any reason. For, you know, uh, it has it, do we have reports on that? Is that, has that been considered a problem for, for the town?
We have a co- a common problem, especially with the gated places, um, it's quite common to go to alarm for the fire department.
Yeah.
When no one's there, and, and there's usually a number, an emergency number. Of a caretaker or somebody that's responsible for the property, so, um, you know.
We wouldn't know anywhere.
There's a chain of command left with the fire department, so it's, it's, uh, doesn't make any difference whether the owner's on vacation. I mean, there's. Many times, nobody's home, they're in the city.
Well, there, there were a few comments earlier in the year regarding, um, Airbnb and, um, neighbors disturbed by Airbnb residents. So we do, we, we did have some discussion on that, so. Uh, I'm just asking, is, it has, is there any way to gather information on that? To see, is this a nuisance to the town?
Uh, Elaine, just, just want to make sure we don't refer to the company, that we're going to refer to it as short-term rentals.
No, not there. I'm sorry.
That we should refer to.
Oh, I agree, thank you. Yeah, short-term rentals, thank you. Uh, but, but we did have that discussion earlier in the year, and, and there was mention of, um, some concerns. And so I'm just wondering if there's any information that, that the town can offer us as far as response, increased response, et cetera.
Yeah, Dave Miller here, I don't believe there's been an epidemic of, um, disturbances. I haven't heard of any. In the last six months, aside from neighbor-to-neighbor disputes.
So, uh, this is Kim, so John and I will, uh, work on this.
Yes, please, get together. We're, I believe we're all pretty much on the same page, and you two can, um. Get it worked out, and next month, we'll see how it reads.
Okay.
Yep.
Sounds good.
Very good, thank you. Item five is the regulation adaptive reuse of barns. That's going to public hearing next month. Uh, we'll see where we're at with that. And. Item six, uh.
Jim, can I just, speaking of that, how we forgot to mention, so everyone remembers, the planning commission?
Oh.
How we didn't, unfortunately, Jim and I both forgot, we needed to notify the planning commission of these things. Um, good thing about that is Chris is on the commi- on the planning commission, so when they're having a discussion, they had questions, they didn't understand our verbiage, our language. Uh, she summoned me upstairs, and I was able to put it to rest. It was really easy. We just need to make a little note. Or Karen, if you can remember, next time we have anything like this, that we, uh, at least have a representative to, to speak for us or something like that.
We spoke along that, uh, few months ago, and I totally forgot this was heading their way.
Same thing, we're both kind of.
We got to be there to explain it. But it did pass, so we're, uh, free to go forward, so. John, you got a CEO report for us?
Uh, yeah, bro, just briefly, the only outstanding issue is the, the, uh, the screening from Sparky's. He went to the wetlands commission last month. Uh, unfortunately, he didn't attend the meeting. They had some questions about it. So next month, God willing, it will be resolved, and we can put that to bed finally. Besides that, we're just, just chugging along, just Karen knows, everyone knows. We're, we're busy downstairs, lots of applications. New houses are still coming in. Um, it, it's busy, it's busy.
Very busy.
Um, along the lines with, uh, the screening issue. I don't know if the commission is aware that, that the current plan, I believe, is a berm.
Thing up to six feet, which his intention is to put a six-foot berm along the property line. Um, my idea, I think it's perfect, it solves a problem, puts it, puts it away. Uh, not my call, yes, go wetlands, because there's a brook there.
Right. I just wanted to bring it to the commission's attention. When you build these berms. We don't specify material. You can lose, use demolition debris, rocks, stones, bricks, um, make a big pile. Or do you think we should someday say that has to be seeded and, you know, made to look halfway decent? Right now, you can build anything you want.
Yeah, we have no definition of a berm.
Right.
Jim, I agree, I think that's a great idea.
I mean, you, you could haul in loads and loads of old buildings from Waterbury and make a big pile, and you got yourself a berm. I think it should be, uh, seeded. Seeded down, so it has a, a decent appearance. But right now, we, we'd have to, we would have to write the language for that, too.
Uh, well, Jim, if it comes to that, I'm sure we can find a way, because it wouldn't be conducive to the neighborhood, et cetera. That would take some effort.
Yeah.
If we had a conflict, I, I'm not worried about it.
Bring it to everybody's attention to, you know, kind of think about it, what a berm, I mean. We have, we have some in town already. Um, I don't know if you noticed on sixty-seven past the mobile station on Bridgewater, he put a berm up and it's a pile of wood chips.
That's incredible, the mountain of wood chips.
Yeah. Um, I just, we do have some berms in Roxbury that you wouldn't even know was a berm, because it's got vegetation on it. And seeded over, it's got growth, and it does the job, and it looks kind of natural.
And, uh, on that point, I'm sure Wetlands, when I talk to him about his proposal, that would be addressed for this situation.
Yeah, that's true, Wetlands in this situation, because of runoff and absorption and blah, 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 all that, yeah.
Correct.
Okay, um, chairman's report, I just wanted to mention the, uh. Cog meeting we had, oh, it was last week, it was on a Tuesday, it was supposed to be the fourth Thursday, but it ended up for some reason on a Tuesday. And we did a Zoom meeting with Job, Jocelyn, and there was about twenty-five people joined in. Same old, it's all housing, all affordable housing, and every town in the state is, it's coming up. That has to provide ten percent of our housing has to be affordable. And currently, the chart that I have in front of me, Roxbury is two point zero six percent affordable. Warren is point one two percent. Washington is two point oh percent. So we're not the only town that falls far below their expectations.
Excuse me, Jim, I have a question on that because when they come up with their stats and that data, they don't know what the rentals go for. I have a rental, we get minimal for it because the guy's been there for twenty years. No one's ever asked me what we charge for rent. So I know that would be another one that's, because honestly, we would charge only seven hundred bucks a month. So he certainly falls into that category, but no one knows that. How many of those?
Jim, I agree. I've got the same situation. I have a house that rents. It's very affordable.
Well, the the two point six percent, Roxbury's actual number of units, rentals or something you can purchase, our actual number of units is twenty four. That's afford.
Dave and I have two.
Yeah, they take apartment over the Roxbury garage. Here's three.
I I think their numbers are skewed, in my opinion.
It could very possibly be, but that's not going to stop them. Friend, the whole state, John, as you know, is coming with regional zoning. And they're going to keep pushing, whatever numbers you want to use, but the more apartments or affordable and the number isn't, they don't use Roxbury's median income to come up with affordability. They use all of Litchfield County.
Let's see, that's not where it's calculated.
And all of Litchfield County, and they come up with their median, and eighty percent of the median is considered affordable.
No, they're cooking the books.
So we could sit back and wait till they cram it down our throats. We can be proactive and try to discuss something to meet those goals. And basically, it takes us back to where Roxbury never really wants to go. And that's a multifamily housing. And I brought that up in the Zoom meeting and they just laughed at me like, if you don't do that, you're going to get sued. That was the answer.
I I, you know, let them, let them bring it. I what's the difference whether you get it forced on your throat or you do it voluntarily?
It's just that maybe we can make it look like we want to make it look and still solve their concerns. I think the more of these apartments and smaller houses like Bill was talking about last year, smaller houses on smaller lots is a step in the right direction to kind of appease what they're trying to tell us to do. So we might go back to that two acre, acre and a half lot with nothing more than eighteen hundred square feet. And maybe that would make a couple more affordable units in Litchfield County. The other thing is not a zoning issue, but it's a selectman's issue, is the housing authority. And that uses private funding. It houses, sells them to qualifying families. And takes that approach. But there's numerous ways to approach this, but they're not going to let up on it. So not just more food for thought. And that is all I have on my chairman's report. If anyone has any questions or has something else they want to add to tonight's meeting. If not, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Second the motion.
Alan seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are all set. Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.